Like everybody's standing, we can do the pledge of allegiance and Alderman Gardner will lead us in the word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most heaven Father and gracious Father, Father God, I just want to come asking you to look down on our city, Father God. Father God, I ask that you come and touch each and every door that dwells here in our city and around our surrounding areas, Father God. Father God, I ask that you allow us to have this meeting go in your favor for the benefit of our citizens here in Vidalia. In your darling and sinning Jesus name, I pray, amen.
Okay. Mr. LaShaw, if you'll do a roll call for us?
Yes, sir. Board of Alderman, roll call for regular public meeting date October 9th, 2018. For Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Doray.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman McCoy. Alderman McCoy is notably absent at this time. Alderman Probst.
Here.
Mayor of the Forum, Board President.
Okay. We're now, get us off, in front of the Alderman, they have the minutes from the previous meeting. If there are any comments on the minutes from the previous meeting. If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I move accept.
Motion made by Mr. Probst, say here, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Doray, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First on our agenda is to review the financial statements for July and August 2018 and our CPA, Ms. Deborah Moe, is calling.
I presented to the board a balance sheet as of August the 31st, and the balance sheet is showing that the total cash is 5.5 million. It's broken down by all the different funds, the bank accounts that we have, but I have summarized them, and the total cash is 5.5 million. The total investments is 2.3 million. The total assets is 32,000, 32.6 million. The total liabilities is 7.8 million, and the total fund balances is 24.9 million. During this time period, you know, we did recognize the sale of the industrial park facility and also the payoff of the debt. We have also provided the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the two months ending August the 31st, and the total combined revenues is showing 10 million 259, and the total expenditures are 8.2. The transfers in and out, well, there was a little error there, but the net change in position is 2.2 million dollars. And the fund balance at beginning was 22.8, so the fund balance ending is 24.8, which is pretty much where I summarized there. And then I provided to the Alderman each of the different funds and their comparison, but there is no budget to compare to, so I don't have a budget comparison to present. I did try to go through and make notes of things that I thought might be of interest, and I do know that the sales tax revenue is trending upward from the same time last year, and I know that the port project is ongoing, and we have expended year-to-date $802,000. I know that the general fund has purchased a new air conditioner for the DMV, and I know that the current personal services are lower than the year before by 36.8,000, 36.8,000, and the petroleum is running higher than the same time last year, and the natural gas is higher by 121,000, but we also have more revenue for our natural gas. The hydro royalties are up from the previous year, along with the expenses up also, but it nets out to be like $39,000 increase in revenue. I have provided the Alderman a list of the transfers, the date, and the reason that we made those transfers, and also wanted to report that the auditors started their field work last week on the audit. So that concludes my presentation.
Do you know, Alderman, have any questions on the report?
At what point will we have a revised proposed budget?
We're going to meet this Thursday with Rick Knowles, and we're going to try to finalize all his work, and he will be, we'll be having a special meeting. Once we can do that, plug those figures in, we'll be finishing up our budget. We feel like the budget's basically where it needs to be. We'll tweak it a little bit with those figures, and we'll be presenting that, and also he'll be at those, probably those budget meetings when we do present it. We'll have a probably call a special meeting for that, so we can devote all of our time to that, and also discuss the rates and so forth with where we're at. I know that, you know, in, starting in August, the rate went down as far as your cost for electricity did. We changed the static factor. I know just on my utility bill, mine was like 10.2 cents as far as a kilowatt hour for the last two months. So, anyway, we'll be, hopefully have that within the next two to three weeks. It just depends on when we can finish it up and get it advertised, and also have the meetings, and we want everybody to participate. I'm going to really encourage people to get out and really come see what's in our budget and what it's used for and how it is used, so really looking forward to that, so, but that's the plan right now.
With regards to the surplus from the sale of the Fred of the Lane building, where is that money being held?
It's in the bank, and it does draw interest. Pat Biglane at Concordia Bank raised the interest rate by 1% when that money came in.
And it's parked in the industrial park fund.
Okay, and what are the plans for expenditure on that?
There are none at this time.
Do you have an idea of how that money can be used to benefit the town?
Well, right now, what we're going to do is wait until the budget and see right now how, and we're going to talk to them. I guess it'd be a good time for us to talk about some things. There are some things that's going to be, that are emergency, we feel like. We have three issues in town where our sewer, we've had some sinkholes, and we've had some sinking in some areas, and Mark's going to explain to it a little bit, but we're in an area where, y'all know, when we get, the river comes up every year, we have seepage water, and all that water comes into, you know, comes up through our ditches, comes up through everything, so you can imagine what it's doing to all of our infrastructure. It's underground, and when that, when that water goes out, it takes material with it, and that's why we have sinkholes, that's why we have, our streets are in the shape they're in, because that, those sewers and things of that nature, when that, when that material falls away from our sewers, they, they break, and we have breaks, and they, there's going to be, there's several places we need to repair right now, and I'm going to let Mark address that just for a minute, if you would, the two or three areas and how about the approximate cost it is going to be to fix those.
I think you just told a bunch of those. We actually have four sinkholes. One of them I'm going to have to fix myself, I'm going to dig it out tomorrow, but the other ones, one of them I put in in the 1940s on the colorway, it's just pretty old. When the river comes up, like you said, it puts pressure on the plumbing, it takes the dirt out and pump it down, it's a good, and it gets hard on the pump. And then to fix it, you have to dig it up or do some sort of pipe earth thing or pipe lining. Right now, it's up to the engineers, and they're deciding what the best way to go about it, and if, if I can dig it out, probably a couple hundred thousand to fix it.
And what, if you don't fix them, tell them what you got.
Well, if you don't fix them, but eventually the pipe will fill up the dirt, and then it will cease to pump, and there are thousands that will have to do. We're about to fix it.
That's just some of the things, you know, that we want to make sure that we have funds for, that, that we want to have available for those type issues, so, but things like that.
One on Jefferson Street, and I got one between Moses and Bubba, one on the Foley Blanks, one for digging up tomorrow is John Dale and Miller. One on Foley Blanks, big one is there.
And Mark, one of my drive-throughs the other day, there might be one on Peach Street down between Apple and, there might be, I'm seeing one part of the road there, real scene, and I was going to...
Just watching that, it's semi-kept a lot, but I don't think there's a question to settle them.
Settle them pretty easily.
We have one on Linden Street, where Linden Street turns the corner, all to, no, no, the other corner. Right, it kind of sinks down right there, I'm not sure what's, if that's something that needs to be moved out, or if Linden Street does, it is sinking right there.
And there's some street issues as well, we've got, I know we've got one over, right off, right by Ump Street, that circle drive right there, that's, that's, that's from water coming up and leaving out and letting the road come into part. So those are some things we're going to have to fix, and so, with those issues, we're just, we're going to try to handle them as they come, but I would encourage anybody, especially those that watch this later on YouTube or whatever, that if you have an area in your home, I mean, or your yard, that looks like you've got a sinkhole, let us know, we need to come look at it. Luckily, we had some people that spotted the one on John Dale here a year and a half ago, because that would have been dangerous, somebody hit that one at the right wrong time, they would have gotten hurt bad, and it was right in the middle of the road, so it was pretty serious, so, but anyway.
Now, that major one, the one I think you're talking about right now, it's being repaired by the initial company that came out, and is that right?
They repaired it, and we're going to watch it, because I'm going to hold our feet to the fire that it's fixed, and we're going to watch it very close, because we spent...
About $40,000.
So the one on John Dale Miller is separate from that one?
Yes, yes, it's separate. That's right?
Yeah. I just wanted to make that specification, since we were talking about both of them, I was thinking.
It's on the border of Concordia Bank and the residence to the, to the east side there, so, okay, any other questions on the finance?
I also noticed on the projected actual result at year-end, you didn't give any projections. It's just the same, same as the actual?
Oh, yeah, right here, because I can't, there's a formula in there that if you had an estimated remaining plus that, they should be exactly the same at this point on that, the formula, that, it's doing what it's supposed to do.
Okay. All right, let's move on to part number two, occupational license applications, where the first one we have is trade name First Fruits, is Kenesha Williams here? Kenesha's not here. Okay, she is going to have a wedding and events, she's a wedding and event decorator, and will provide rental and things that go with the wedding function, and she's going to be located in the building, I think, right there on the corner of, right across the Old Courthouse, over that catty corner there, so, is that right, Jay, is that?
Yes.
And right now, she hasn't got a signed application at this time, but as soon as she does, we'll certainly bring that. Any questions?
Yes, sir, so she just came off.
She doesn't say it's, she isn't in the original.
She just came in today.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion, we accept it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gardner, say here, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Doray, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one is the Bar Fitness Center LLC on 901 Carter, that used to be the old double play building there. It is a fitness center, and there, do I hear a motion there, are they there, any representatives from them here today? Okay. I do walk in the mornings, and I do see some activity there, so that's good. Do I hear a motion, we accept this occupational license?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Doray, say here, second.
Second.
Say it by Mr. Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the second page, you'll look at, on their sign, that's attached to the Any questions?
This is for the Dollar Tree?
No, no, this is on the second page of that application, the Bar Fitness Center.
We approved that one already?
Or...
We just approved that one?
That's what I thought.
He called it an occupational license.
It's a sign out.
Right, yeah, this, oh, I'm sorry, it's a sign out, I'm sorry. It's on the second page of the Bar, I'm sorry.
It's a sign.
I stand corrected.
Well, we only had one occupational license application, so now I think we're looking at the outdoor sign applications, number three?
That would be correct.
Yes.
Okay.
So we did approve that sign in the previous vote?
The Bar.
For the Bar.
Okay. What, in the previous meeting?
No.
No, that's, we just, we just...
A moment ago.
You just said occupational license application.
Okay. Well, we've got to approve the sign.
We, we just did.
Okay.
We just hadn't got the Dollar Tree yet.
Right?
That's right, that's the sign application on the Bar.
They didn't have an occupational license.
Oh, okay, I thought that was occupational license.
That was last month.
Okay, I'm with you now, I'm sorry. Y'all, y'all have to forgive, my uncle died today, we're a real close family, and my mind is just, it's been a, been a bad day, so forgive me, please, if I'm somewhere else sometimes.
We are very sorry for your loss.
Well, I appreciate that. He was, he was the one that came to the, he's my uncle, he was a doctor of education, science, and math, and Tommy knows him, he was the president of Police Jury Association and also past president of Louisiana Teachers Association, well thought of, man, super sweet, he came to that, he wanted to be here for Vidalia last time, and he just passed away just earlier, just not blown a dog, so, anyway. All right, let's move on to sign application for Dollar Tree. They've come along fast, I think we've all seen what they're going to do. One of the things that we want to make sure of on this is, is the location of that sign. I think there's some competition as far as visual things, and I just want to make sure, I think we can approve it as, as it is, you know, they've got a location established on this, so...
Because is it going to conflict with McDonald's sign?
Well, and that's one of the things with the questions, but we will, we will, before it's put in place, we will try to make sure that there's not a conflict that's going to cause...
It's been brought up to this sign company about if that pole is sitting directly in line with that McDonald's sign, and she said they could offset it back, but, you know, like...
So who's going to make sure that gets done, because once they probably put it up, it's up?
Yeah, when it's in, it's in.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll take care of that from our side, we'll...
This is just the, I don't know how the Dollar Tree situation is, but this is the landowner putting this pole sign up. The company itself, when the store opens, will have another sign application for the sign on the building, so two separate companies doing this, and so they weren't ready for the, for the building, for the sign building, so...
So this is just the construction of the pole, the sinking of the pole in the ground?
Pole and, and the sign.
Okay.
Yep. But this is the landlord doing this, not, not the company. Can I ask a question about that building?
Pardon?
Can I ask a question about this, that building, the new building that they're putting up there?
Sure, I guess, I mean, what's your, what's your question?
The town has an ordinance about the fractures on buildings that haven't, currently not in compliance with. Have they received some sort of labor in the past?
We have Larry Elders as our inspector, and I'm sure he's inspected and inspected the plans, and now we'll have to ask, Bill, go ahead, Bill.
They, they, in front of the sign, in front of the building and down the sides, it's always supposed to be stucco, we didn't have any building. What you see, what you see is not what the, what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be a stucco on the front and down the side, but you don't...
But they, weren't they also granted an exception by the Board of Adjustments on how far the stucco will go?
Stucco will go down the side a certain distance, but not, because our zoning says the whole side is open now, but if you ride down the street, none of them like that, but the point is they did get a variance for not being all the way down the side, the front and down the side a short distance, it's, that's, I've been looking at too, because I've been trying to figure out how they're going to be the stucco, but they kind of been out. Well, I just pulled back from some of my questions, really, as a town, of how existing ordinances, and then if you lay something, you know, existing buildings, maybe grandfather being all ready, but yet we're not really controlling the look of our town, when we do lay an ordinance, not a, or a technical layer, my question. Clarification, nothing to lay, still, that's not based on zone code, and it varies with granted to the, to the code, not a lady, okay? Here maybe a terrible, if a short distance down the side.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion, we accept this?
I don't know, I have a, I have some, some trepidation of approving it without it being completely specified.
With a location?
Yeah, that, that, that scares me a little bit.
I think, or to table it and tell, because like I said, Jay, Robert had a good question about who's going to enforce that, what's going to happen, just bring it back up after they make that adjustment, I mean, that way we don't have to worry about it. I mean, approve is approval, and what's here is what's here, so, I mean, it'd be a, just a matter of getting it redone.
I agree with that, I agree with that to a, to a point, let me just jump on the other side, and it don't matter to me, if y'all want to table it, that's fine, but the other thing is, is he may be, couldn't put it completely where he's legally able to put it, he can't help it, it's going to interfere with his neighbors seeing his sign, so what I'm saying is, he might be, so far, they told Jay, said they're willing to work with us to make sure it's right, so, all I'm saying is, where he puts it, he might have all the legal rights in the world, and it's McDonald's the one that'd be out, and they can't, you see what I'm saying?
Well, that's, I guess that's my question, is it, are we in compliance with what, is it compatible to what we need as far as the ordinance or whatever we have?
That is something we'll get the inspector to check out, but you say what I'm saying, don't you?
Yeah, but I mean, that's what I guess I was thinking, it wasn't there.
If y'all want to table it, table it till that's clarified, but I mean, Jay said they were willing to work and put it where, being neighbors, they'll be happy with each other, that's what my understanding was.
It's not, you know, it's not blocking McDonald's sign, because it's just a pole, because the sign's 12 feet up in the air.
Right. And the sign you're talking about is the McDonald's one, grand.
Small, yellow.
The pole doesn't look that big, really.
But anyway, if y'all want to table it, we'll table it, no, I just know they like that.
Eight inches, pretty small.
It's the sign that has their specials on it.
Yeah. I mean, can we just, on the location of sign, can we approve it with the amendment under a location of sign to be installed so as not to interfere with the, the existing sign for neighboring business? Can we do something like that? Because I mean, I don't want to stop their progress, they're, they're coming up really quickly, and I mean, you can't always...
So you actually talked to them, Jay?
Talked to the sign company.
Sign company?
Yes, that's installing at this sign light, and, you know, as far as the sign, when I told her, everything looked to be okay, but there was just that worry that it was in line with that sign, we had gone and looked at it.
How, and there's a pretty good bit of distance probably between that sign and McDonald's sign, I mean, that's a pretty long line.
It's the actual smaller sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you still would see it, you wouldn't like it's going to block it.
I make the motion, we go ahead and approve?
Okay, motion made by Ms. Doray, second by Mr. Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is a sign from Walmart, it's strictly that they're wanting to advertise where their pickup service is, and I think this was going to be attached to their building, where the pickup area is. Is that right? Was it, was that a building attachment?
That's what it looks like to me.
Yes, sir.
That's what it looks like on his drawing.
So do I hear a motion, we accept that?
I make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gardner, second by Mr. Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's now to number four, last month, y'all know we talked about the mutual aid agreement between Vidalia Fire Department, Natchez Fire Department. Well, there were some questions on insurance questions, legality questions, and we've got those answered. I'm going to let Jay go ahead and address the insurance ones, he did talk directly with the company, and also, we're going to let counsel discuss the legalities of it as far as, we checked into those things, and that, and we checked with LMA, the attorney with the LMA, and she, they said, they said it's certainly within the rights to do that, so, but Jay, go ahead and talk about the insurance.
As far as the insurance, we did talk to our insurance company, they assured us that our vehicles, personnel were covered on both sides of the river, so as far as, you know, as far as any coverage or liability question, that thing was, we're completely covered.
And counsel, I mean, do you have any question, if you want to add to that as far as the agreement is set?
I spoke with the executive counsel for the LMA, and she gave me some citations to the Constitution and the Larson Act. I checked on some of those, and her basic position was is that a municipality can enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with any person, other municipality, other state agency, agency from another state. The Constitution nor the Larson Act has any language which prohibits that, and I checked back on some of those, and I couldn't find any language that did that, gave me a couple of attorney general's opinions. So with that in mind, I went ahead and drew the resolution, which would authorize the mayor to go ahead and negotiate with Natchez and find out, you know, what terms they want in such an agreement. There's no reason to do one first, and I, we talked to Natchez and make sure what they want to do.
Just, just a real quick overview, and I see Johnny out here, what, Johnny, I'm going to let you go ahead and tell the people who are here, might not be here last time, what we're talking about. Tell them what we've got now with Concordia Parish as far as being a...
Automatic.
Automatic aid and mutual aid. Go ahead and explain that right quick for them.
Okay, so, we have with district, Airport Road, we have an automatic aid agreement with DMV, and what that is, is when Dublin gets a call anywhere between outside edge of city limits here and Airport Road itself, we'll get that same call at the same time, and we send one man and one more trucks to go and assist them on their fire between here and Airport Road. That's automatic, and we get the call as soon as they get the call. A mutual aid is whenever a municipality such as Natchez gets a call, once they arrive on the scene and they see how big it is, if they need any assistance from us, then they will turn around and call the dispatcher, get them to call us, requesting us to send a truck and man over there, or equipment for them to use. So it's not, it's a call they get, but inside their city limit area there, or whatever we decide how far we can go into their area, you know, that's what the mutual aid agreement we normally signed with their chief and myself, you know, and the mayor as well, is how far we agree that we'll go if they need help on it, and then that would be the same for us, how far they were willing to come over in our area to help us, and it's just whoever gets, when they get their call, if they need help, then they call, it's not automatic to where as soon as they get the call, we get the call, we run the scene, and once we get there, it's just a toss call in our trucks and get the route, it's not like they have us, just, when they need us, they know what they need, so then they call us, and we respond.
I will tell you all this, when, when, when the chief asked me the first time, said that we want to let Natchez use our ladder truck, I didn't think long enough to know, and I don't think that's a good idea, then he and the chief from Natchez came and sat down with me and explained through the whole thing, and that's why I brought it to this point. They feel like it is a good thing for both sides of the river. In fact, Johnny, how long you been with the fire department?
25 years.
You said, you've seen instances where they have help, but we have not ever had to cross the river.
Exactly.
So, not saying that's good, because we're the only ones that can receive benefit out of it, tomorrow they might have something like they had at the cellar here not too long ago, they'd have to have help, but based on his recommendations, while we're bringing that out, up for, to even investigate that, so...
The reason they, the reason it all come up is they come and ask, because their ladder truck they've got is an old ladder truck, and it was broke down, and they knew we had a ladder truck, now they were wanting to know if they needed a ladder truck, we wouldn't bring our ladder truck there and use it on their scene, you know, that's what they were asking for. They've got their ladder truck loaning now, and they're getting ready to order another one, get another building, so they're going to have two, so the possibility of them actually needing our ladder truck again, once they get their second one, you know? You know, it's not a problem.
Does that indicate that their chances are, if they need an additional truck, a fire truck over there here would be our ladder truck?
Not necessarily, it'd be whatever they request, it depends on the nature of the...
I mean, they've got several ladder trucks, they've got pumbers, tankers, you know, they've got plenty of those items like that, you know, they got way more than we have, so I mean, that was the only reason they come to us to ask about the ladder truck, because they only have one, you know, it was broke down.
And Ray, I, I don't, the answer to that question, you just don't know, because for example, they might be on a big tall building, or one of their buildings downtown with that, and they have a small thing they need our assistance on with a small truck, you know, it's just hard to make that call, but I'm sure whatever that call would be, they would identify it at that time, so. Any question from the Alderman before we maybe pursue with the resolution to pursue doing a CEA with the guidelines set forth, and we'll come back and, and let you know what we feel, I'm going to let Johnny them set those guidelines, what you think, we can safely draw those boundaries on as far as them coming in, you know, helping us with and vice versa, so...
I have a question.
Who, who? Okay, yeah.
I have a question, I don't know the question about this fire department issue, but one thing that comes to mind is the wear and tear on our equipment, and, you know, I know that this Vidalia has struggled with our budget and with our finances, so I'm just, how do we handle that, if it's wear and tear, like if we go into a fire, some of our equipment is damaged, can we, you know, allow Natchez to use it? Like, if we go into a fire, some of our equipment is damaged, and we, you know, allow Natchis to use it. Who handles that part of it? Is that something you address?
Well, I, I, those, those, it wouldn't be any more wear and tear than what they put in on a daily basis or training, and they, they, they like to keep those things. Uh, Johnny, how often y'all go through them pretty regular? I mean, you'll see that, you'll see this...
Training, I mean, it's, it's not on the truck or in the classroom training, Monday through Friday.
But what, what I'm saying, that with Thursdays, y'all take and actually use the equipment. And, I mean, they run the pumps, they run everything, they check them.
They run the pumps every morning.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, there's still, the wear and tear, I mean, you'll see them all over town at times, you know, they'll be doing things and, um, so they're, they're used...
Robbery, train, uh, just re-familiarization, things of that nature as well. And we also go to our training tower over there and use the ladder truck there at times, and do a rappelling, things of that nature as well.
Was Destiny, I was just wondering, were you asking about if it was damaged while it was over there? Is that what you're saying, was if it was damaged while it was across the river? In the line of, and that would be an insurance issue, that would be still covered.
Also, if our firefighters are gonna be going to the Natchis side, will that be an increase in pay for them, because they're taking on our city and other schools?
No, you know, within their scope of duty.
Mr. Chief?
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it balance out, if they have to come over and help us? Wouldn't, you know, the wear and tear on their equipment and their man hours and their power coming over here to help us, if they'd be, same budget would kind of balance out, kind of like sales of justice.
Well, that's why I made the point that...
As we were talking about earlier, as far as the now, since the 25 years I've been here, they've come and helped us with their equipment and their man, but we haven't had to go ahead and help them or assist them.
That's correct. So it balances.
Okay.
Chief Evans, do you have the parameter, because I see in this cooperative endeavor, as it's currently typed, you know, we're authorizing it to be negotiated and prepared. Have y'all negotiated? Are y'all at that point?
No, we're not negotiating yet, because we were trying to make sure everything, our insurance was gonna cover everything first before we went and ventured into that.
Okay.
I mean, it's like Nolan's spot out here at Airport Road, I mean, it's not that far from us. I mean, Nolan covers the whole parish, but as far as what we go to, I mean, we don't go to Airport Road as far as we'll go that way. I'm sure once we get on a map and look at it on a maps field, you know, we can see how far we can go, so that if we get something here, our equipment and our guys can come back, you know.
Right, and that's kind of what I was wondering about, was...
Right. We'll get a mile or eight, it's up to that, and then the same thing over there to kind of see, and, and time-wise, how long it will take to get there and back, like you...
And, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely strictly on their expertise and what he feels comfortable with on that. I'm gonna go by his recommendation on that.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm, because, because you know what your response time has got to be to the people in Badae, you'll know what, what that'll be, and I'm gonna let, I trust y'all's judgment on that, so.
Well, that, that actually makes me think of another question, where if we're helping in Natchis and something happens in Delia, will, how will that, that, um, if we have, God forbid, you know, two fires at once, and we have people helping, and will we have, you know, equipment here to help our city?
Johnny's got that answer, because I asked him that question.
Oh, yeah.
If, uh, that's what we're saying, as soon as, if we get the call, as soon as we get the call here, say that, say that we're over there with a truck right now at the Natchis, and we get a call right now saying we have something on the Chalm Street, as soon as we get the call, our guys will have the regular with them as well. He's gonna get that same call, he's gonna know right then, but start coming. And if we get there and see that it's nothing, it's just a false call, we'll call him back, tell him, I don't know, go back to Natchis, but he'll be on his way coming to Natchis.
How, how long will it take to, like, if you're on, if you're on scene, and you have to present the title or something, you know? If you're on scene and you're battling a blaze, and you get a call in Delia, how long will it take to pack up everything and get on the road to come to Delia?
Well, that's the thing about it, we're only gonna send one truck, and one to two guys at the most, according to what they have in there. And that's another group that helps us out as well with Nolan, is because they're getting calls as soon as we're getting, there's a structural fire that's going on here, and we get the call, say there's a fire at a certain address here, they're getting that same call at their station. So, if some of our guys over there with our truck, their guys and their trucks are coming to help us as well.
Well, thank you for helping me with that.
Okay. There are a motion from the council, or?
I make a motion that we accept.
I second.
Motion made by Ms. Dory, second by Mr. Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand.
Okay, we're gonna, we're actually, I think the resolution is as far as to go ahead and proceed on producing a CEA that I can, we'll negotiate a CEA cooperative endeavor agreement with the city in Natchis. Or mutual aid.
So the decision is to pass this resolution.
But...
Yes, sir.
Pass it, and then, like I said, we're gonna use it there. Like you said, you're gonna depend on Johnny and that chief to do the right thing, to get the cooperative endeavor. So I mean, that way it can proceed.
I'm sorry, I heard the word except, and I didn't know what we were accepting.
Sorry, yeah.
We're, we're adopting, we're adopting a resolution to proceed with the, uh, because we'll have to have the agreement. Yeah, Ms. Dory made the motion, and the second was by Mr. Gardner. Okay, number, number five is, uh, need the board to approve to sell surplus vehicles. We went through this once before, and we went through and had the, uh, mechanics go through and give us an extensive list on these things, and we've been sitting on them hoping we could do something with them, or wait for any use within the town, and I think we just need to go ahead and get those off. So we want to re-advertise those, and also, uh, Joey, if you have any Farady or Clayton or Waterproof, if they want to entertain, uh, some kind of agreement with one of those, or all those vehicles, they want to do that. What's, what's the board, do you want to entertain that, or do y'all want to see if any of the local enforcement agencies or fire departments would like a, a vehicle?
What's the values? What's, I mean, what are their values?
I mean, these 2010 Dodge Chargers are...
Probably pretty good, huh, Joe? What, have you got a value on them?
I, I don't have a value at all. Some of them don't even run.
I've got a detailed list on the things that's needed on them. Um, they are very well worn, they're well-used. I think they've already got all the equipment off of them that had any value on them. So. I just, I would think the easiest thing to do is, is put them off, let them be gone for bid.
That's the easiest thing, just put them up for bid.
We'll put them out, we'll advertise, and...
Does that money that is received from, go back in Joey's budget then, or does it go back in Joey's budget?
Mm-hmm, it does.
I would think.
For that year, but it don't go back, the way I got to understand it of, it doesn't go back for the following year, saying that that amount is still there.
Right, I'm just saying that would go back, money receives would go back...
It'd, it'd show as a revenue, I mean, it's...
Right, to his, his budget.
She's put it up as, uh, other, uh...
On the ones that don't run, would it be more beneficial to just, I mean, can we scrap them, instead of spending the money on advertising and, and all of that, you know, legal work to, to do it that way? Would it be better just to scrap them?
Well, it's just gonna, I mean, somebody's gonna want them for something. I mean, I've seen several of them around, they wind up being picked up by, putting a tag on for a blight, honestly, but, uh...
Well, one way would be, if you didn't want to spend money on advertising, you could put it on Facebook. So many people would share it.
Legally, legally, you gotta, you gotta, and you're gonna pay, it's the advertisers, you're gonna, if you, if you sell one of them, you need to go ahead and list them all.
List them all at one time, which would save them on advertising, yeah, I need to all go in the same...
Do I hear motion, we do that?
I make a motion.
Motion by alderman Probst, here, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second thing, uh, we've been worried to death by someone wanting to buy the, uh, uh, the street something, something with the street department's guy, it's a chipper, it's been in the bushes for a long time, this, this...
Nineteen ninety-eight, I believe, uh, one of our first chippers that the town involved in.
And...
Been in the weeds for seven, eight years, somewhere along there.
This little man, he's been wanting to buy it, and I said, sir, I can't, we can't sell it to you, we can't give it to you. I, I, I gotta put it up for bid, it's town property. So that's what it is, we're putting it out there for bid, we're gonna let him know, and we'll advertise it, try to do it with the same advertiser, it won't cost us any extra money to attach it as well.
If we could, I would like to advertise it for bid for scrap. I wouldn't want him, wouldn't want him taking his chipper and actually try to open up a tree service or something.
Okay, that's a good point.
Does it work at all?
Well, it did when we put it up, but, I mean, it's, this thing, this thing is ancient, it's in very bad condition. That's the reason that we marked, ended up buying a chipper, we ended up buying a chipper that was, was ancient. I always wanted him to open up a tree service with this thing, and, you know, without us saying they're selling it for scrap.
Fair motion, we sell that surplus chipper?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Gardner?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dory, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fair motion, we adjourn.
Before we do that, we had tabled something at the last meeting, the policy and procedures handbook. We, we tabled that to this meeting, and I don't find it on the agenda.
Uh, well, until we get a, uh, we're talking with, I have, uh, we visited with Scotts here tonight, and, uh, we also have discussed, we talked with, we've done our discussions with the legislative auditor and things, and we haven't got a satisfactory answer on what things need to be included in that. Again, this is best practices, and I feel like for us to introduce these things. Uh, I do want to say, again, this is something that is strictly, the government requires us to have procedures in place to handle the money and how the money's collected. One of those things where money's collected is dealing with fines that the police department writes. Has nothing to do with us having anything to tell the police department how to do its job or anything. This is strictly policy and procedures on how that money gets processed and held, and the process of how it's handled. Same way, just like our, our tellers that work and receive payments. Those same guidelines tell them, whether it's dual control, how, where they lock their money up, whether it's deposited, things of that nature, and it's just a policy and procedures thing that we're trying to implement that the town, the town has never had. And we need to have those things in place. It's not for any kind of thing other than having those procedures set forth for whether it's now or 12 years down the road for whoever's in the office to have procedures to go by. And for us to get a clear thing on that, um, we're waiting on, there are best practices, and then there's also things that are actually required, and we want to distinguish between those, what's gonna be satisfactory with everybody, so. At this time, rather than bring it up and just have a lot of discussion and table it again without having all of our final information on it, I thought would be, would be counterproductive. So that's why it's not on the agenda tonight.
Judge, did you set up your own?
I'm, I'm working on it, and Mayor Craft did come by and talk to me about that. So, City Hall will probably adopt policies in minutes about how to handle things within City Hall. And we'll provide information to them.
And all I would say, that any, any, any policies and procedures, whether it's city court, fire department, police department, any policy and procedures you have have got to be adopted by this board. They are the governing body, they have, they are the legislative arm, they have the say on those things. So if there's policies and procedures that are being used in this town, they have to be adopted by this board. So if there's, if you have those and they haven't been adopted, we need to get those and have them adopted by this board for y'all to look at, so you know what's in them. And that would go, like, again, it's not, whether it's police, city court, fire department, whoever, and that's just the way it's written. And that way, then, we're all under the same umbrella, so, I mean, everybody knows, you know. And if anything's changed, it's gotta be changed by ordinance or amendment to an ordinance to deal with it, okay?
Well, well, it's a long dead life, though. You know, the beauty of these guys here are elected officials, and they have certain responsibilities about what they do within their department, including what they vote in. And I'm sure, you know, that there already exists some procedure of how the monies collected from these folks, uh, get to the city. And it seems that the city policy would be how to handle it from the point they receive it from these two elected officials department, and, and your procedures or your policies should be written into the books in that manner. And it's up to them to develop how they handle it within their department.
That's what we're trying to do, that's what we're trying to do, Ray, but, I mean, right now, believe it or not, there's not any policies and procedures established by, adopted by the town. Okay, we're trying to, this is, again, out of the best practice offered from the legislative office, these are things we're trying to do to put in place that they recommended for us, whoever's, whoever's elected, for time to come, this is the best policy procedure for us, the town, whoever's in, whoever's in these positions, how they are gonna, how they're governed to handle money. Because one of the most important things in government is for them, and that's why I set up fund accounting, is to track those tax dollars, or track those monies, and there's controls in place to, to help them.
Well, my only suggestion to claim that is that, uh, I disagree with you that this board has some governance authority, what they do, until the city itself, or the towns itself, receives the money they're getting away from those authorities. So it seems unreasonable to put into the town's policies or future management how they to handle within their department. But it does seem reasonable that once the town has to, has to account for that money how they receive it, how they handle it, uh, then, then that's what your policy, that procedure should be limited to. And that's getting my opinion.
You, you, you confused me there a little bit, but, Ray, I said anytime that there's money come to the town, it is the town's, regardless of what, where it comes in. See, Johnny and them receive payments on, on, uh, on the ambulance, I think, they receive payments over there. That money's got to be, when it comes to the town, it's the town, it's not the fire department, it is the town.
Johnny's not an elected official.
That's correct.
Uh, these guys are elected officials.
Okay.
Uh, and, and they have a certain responsibility by whatever governs them to do correctly within their department. And you're, you and your board have, once you've got that money from the, uh, procedural practice there, so it seems unusual that you would write a policy and procedure for them as elected officials.
Ray, back to where we were the other night, that's what we're trying to get to, to shorten what he had in there for them, is what I think, and I think that's what they're working on.
And again, even, please, please understand, this is the governing board. Yeah, I'm elected, and Joey's elected, I'm still under the, the ordinances that the, that the governing body has adopted. The police chief is as well. He has to have, if he adopts, if he has policies and procedures, this council has to approve them. I'm sorry, that's just, this is the governing body, even though we're elected, we're not out from under their, their legislative ordinances and, and the law they put into place.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm not really, you know, I don't know enough about the laws there, but it does seem just practical that, um, if they've already got the policy and procedure amended to handle the money as it comes to them, and they are, and we also have existing a method that that money that they get is passed on to you guys. I don't know how that is, but, uh, it would seem, it would proper for you as an elected official to govern them in your way.
I'm not governing, all I'm saying is, Ray, is that, is, you said, like, I'm an elected official, should I be, do I have to go by the ordinances?
Well, I...
I mean, shouldn't I?
You're an elected official, and you've got a responsibility for a certain, uh, your responsibility covers a certain area. It doesn't cover any guy. You're...
I agree, but you, I'm under the ordinances, and same, the same way is, is that every department, whether it's the police department, city hall, they're under the city. This is the legislative body, Ray, all I'm saying is, if he's got policies and procedures that were adopted by the council in previous years, that's wonderful, that's great, we haven't found that. All I'm saying is, if there's policies and procedures that they have established, present it to this governing body, let them go over them and ask their questions, and, and if they're fine with it, let's adopt them and make them a part of our ordinance, okay? And we're legal, we're good, okay? That's all I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get us in compliance with everything that was supposed to be.
I do follow that's policy, but I'm just suggesting to you that perhaps your understanding of it is wrong.
Okay. Okay. I've, I've spent countless hours, Ray, talking to attorneys and legislators and things, so, okay, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am, but, uh, okay, any other questions on that?
I have one more question.
Okay.
I know y'all already adjourned, but what is the best way to get, um, an item added to the agenda to discuss?
Well, of course, that, that's almost an agenda I'm there to discuss it, but I will say this, and then, and we're gonna probably adjourn here, is if it is something that you feel like it's an issue that needs to be addressed by this board or council, that needs to be changed to an ordinance, then that needs to be brought to us, and if it's something that needs to be an ordinance drawn up, an ordinance needs to be, what's in the ordinance, brought to us, let's look at it. then that needs to be brought to us, and if it's something that needs to be an ordinance drawn up, an ordinance needs to be, what's in the ordinance, brought to us, let's look at it, and then that, see if it's something we need to add to the agenda, or something we can handle without involving the council to handle, you know, as far as, you know, the color of the, uh, street signs or things of that nature, those are things that should be handled, you know, in, in offices and stuff, rather than take up people's time. This is for the business part of the town to have, or, to take care of business, things that we're supposed to take care of. It's not a forum, it's not where people can come do that. If it's something that would think warrants, uh, a vote by the governing body to amend the ordinance or things of that nature, please come see me, we'll sit down and talk about it, bring whoever you want, many people as you want, we'll sit down and talk about it. So that's, that's the process on that. Okay.
So come to your office and talk to you?
That'd love, I'd love for you to, love for you to.
And you decide if it goes in your department, is that right? You decide if it goes?
I do have control of the agenda, that's correct. Okay, any other questions?
I got one other thing that we had tabled, actually.
Okay.
We kinda put off last year. Uh, around this time last year, the statement was made that if the, all members of the board got off of the city's health insurance, that you would consider a reduction in pay.
Okay.
It's been a year now since that was done.
Mm-hmm.
And you have yet to take a
It's not been a year, but I mean, it was December when y'all finally got off of it, and, uh, and that's something that we'll, but I think, I'm trying to understand your purpose and scope, when I'm not even, there's several people that make more money in, in the town than me, why am I singled out above everybody else?
Because that was the statement that was made at that meeting, that if we got off of it
I said I would consider, and y'all got off of it, December of last year is October, so.
That's right, I did send the intent to get off of the insurance in October, but because of open enrollment, the new policy would not begin until January. So I was just bringing it back up around the same time that we discussed it at the alderman's meeting.
And what would be the motive toward me personally, Ms. Dory, as opposed to, there are more people in the town making way more money than me. I saved the town money, I, it's cost my family for me not to take the insurance, which would be a family coverage, which would cost the town nineteen thousand dollars. I'm a full-time employee, I work full-time. I could have that, but I like not to do that. I saved the town that money, so I could do that. I like not to, so what I'm saying is, why attack me and not address the whole town as a whole, or a group of employees that are making a certain amount? Why? I'm just curious.
It was suggested that certain employees at certain levels take a, a five percent decrease, that I believe was brought up by one of the employees who made that amount. It was not brought up by the alderman, and you declined to, to accept that as well. And, you know, we keep talking about, we've gotta have reduction in expenditures, we can't, you know, lower utilities, we can't do this without reduction in expenditures, and I'm just wondering how dedicated are you to that? Will you sacrifice your pay?
Will you sacrifice yours?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, I'm just curious. Well, look, we talked about, and we met with all the aldermen, one of the aldermen didn't show up, and we all, we talked with several of them, and one of the things discussed was everybody making over a certain threshold to take a five percent cut. And then there was other aldermen, just as many, said that they didn't wanna see anybody take a cut. So with that being said, and we've also made cuts, we're now operating this town backing out Capital Outlay, which has the ported monies in it. We're operating this town financially, I think it's over almost six million dollars cheaper than when we took office. That's in two years' time, a little over two years' time, that's a lot of money. And we're hoping that these things will take effect. Again, we're getting off onto something that's, that's not supposed to happen here, but, uh, I'll be glad to discuss these things in an office, rather than putting them out here. This is not where this is for, for these discussions.
Oh, no, these financial discussions should absolutely happen in these alderman's meetings.
But, I mean, this is, this is discussion, we can have Ms. Dory in my office, I mean, you can bring who you want to, and we'll have these discussions in there. I mean, this is, this is, is this gonna require action tonight?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But not everything discussed at an alderman meeting requires action. We, we discuss things all the time, and, you know, for true transparency, we need to have these discussions in here. We shouldn't, you know, have meetings before the meetings in your office, as I witnessed tonight, we shouldn't do those things.
Wait, wait a minute, did you witness in the meetings before, what did you witness?
Yeah, when I pulled up out front, there were aldermen in your office.
Alderman Best and council was in there, and they, I think they were talking about, I don't know, it was football games and things of that nature, there wasn't a meeting before the if you wanted to talk about the real, no, nevermind, no, I'm sorry, I regress, I'm not, don't worry, that's, that's
Make the motion, adjourn.
Motion made by Alderman Best, we adjourned, go here a second?
I just wanna know, was that one of the aldermen in your office? Because I know I was, so.
Well, if you know you were, then no.
I'm just asking a question, though.
He dropped by and said
We just, we just making a point for the people.
Yeah, right, transparency, that's right, transparency.
Go here a second?
I make the motion.
Uh, motion already made, second, all in favor?
Right.